All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting for the city of Casa Grande. We'll call the meeting to order, and first order of business is our indication and our pledge of allegiance. So please remain standing for all. And Esther, floor is yours.
Please join me in prayer. Gracious God, we gather here this evening to ask your grace and mercy upon this session. We ask you grant your wisdom upon this council so that they may make wise and just decisions for all the people of the great city of Casa Grande. May there be peaceful and productive discourse among all those who gathered here today. May our single-minded purpose be to accomplish the best for the most according to your way. Grant your blessing upon the proceedings this evening and each one here present. We ask all these things in the name of our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gloria, let the roll call show that all council members are present.
Second.
For the minutes.
Mayor, we just have one, one meeting minutes approval that we need to okay for the claim, that's a claim, city regular meeting minutes from February 1st, 2021 is all we have to do tonight, and I move that those are accepted as, as shown.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the council meeting minutes from February 1st. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Next is claims to the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and play, and pay the claims dated January 27th to February 9th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor to approving the claims of January 27th through February 9th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, claims are approved. The meeting agenda, I do have one change. I want to move item N, which is our reports, to precede item M, which is the executive session. So move that up. Larry, any other changes?
We have none.
Any changes from council?
You did.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, tonight's agenda is approved. Move to item F, which is our special presentation. So we have some tonight. So excited to see our officers here, or officer, no, two officers, Mosher and Ramirez here tonight. And Gloria, you gonna perform this?
I'm.
Swearing in.
I can. I state your name.
I, Jacob Ramirez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend and against all enemies.
Is anybody taking a picture?
And defend and against all enemies.
Born and domestic.
Born and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And I will be done.
So help me God.
You're welcome.
Congratulations, and welcome to the city of Casa Grande. Not that you weren't here already. All right, next we have the swearing in of the firefighters tonight. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of them. Holy cow. Were you guys one academy class?
Yeah.
Were you all the class?
I, second.
I, third.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And defend and against all enemies.
And defend and against all enemies.
Born and domestic.
Born and domestic.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of firefighter.
Discharge the duties of firefighter.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And I will be done.
So help me God.
Absolutely.
I don't know about you.
We have high expectations of you guys, so.
Mayor, I think this is such a good program to swear them in.
Yeah.
In council chambers and recognize them from the start on, so.
Yeah, it's nice.
And, and also, I don't know about you guys, but they seem to get younger and younger. They look younger and younger. It's like, wow.
I think that's a fact.
That's awesome.
Right. Also tonight, and I don't know that any of them are here, but we have.
Yes.
We are gonna recognize the 2020 Leadership Academy graduates. They, it's been a long haul. They've been in the academy for a year. So not necessarily active, but I do wanna read their names into the record.
And Mr. Mayor.
And congratulate them.
Mr. Mayor, they are participating virtually this evening.
Oh, okay.
This, this was their final session, so yes, they are watching.
Great. Well, congratulations to all of you, and, and forgive me if I butcher your name. I wanna congratulate all of our participants, and it was a big list this year. Benjamin Brusano, Brian Keller. Let's, make, make sure you let me know if Brian Keller showed up tonight, too. Carol Williams, David Quijera, Deborah Brusano, Donald Fronheiser, Dino or DJ DeLuca Jr., Donald Schwarzkopf, Fred Bauer, Gina Peralta, Chuck Dol, Dozel, Dozel, excuse me, Dozel, I should know Chuck's last name. Grace Mullin, Yvette Roach, James Gwynn, James Pacheco, James Summers, James Sewer, Jim Sewer, Jennifer Clopthor, Jennifer Struck, Kim Vandenberg from our HOHP, Leonard Bruce, Lincoln Keller, that's Brian Keller's son, he went through with his father, Lisa Miller, Kaya Scott, DeBae Ramos, Nicholas Medel, Richard Castillo, Robert Alonso, Rosa Menchen, Sharon Keeling, Stephanie Siegla, Taylor Hedges, and Thomas Stephen Bettis. So congratulations to all of those participants in our 2020 Leadership Academy.
That's one of the bigger classes we've all.
It is. And we invite them to actually come back whenever we do this virtually again. Is that gonna be next year, probably?
Well, Mayor, it's difficult to tell, but we, we are definitely gonna be sending them their diploma for graduating the class this year, and we'll likely be inviting them back to a formal meeting when we, when we have either capacity or have an opportunity to have more people in the audience.
I know, I know at the first meeting this year that I attended, we were, we were gonna invite them back to participate in the field trips.
Yeah.
That they missed out on. So, 'cause that's kinda one of the more important parts to go see all of, all the city facilities and that sort of thing. So, all right, thank you, Larry. All right. Next then, we have the consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of, of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything you wanna pull off? Anybody from the public? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion, or actually, I'll, yeah, entertain a motion.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, the, really, the only other item on the agenda besides our executive session tonight is the ordinance resolution K1. This is the final ordinance and final read of number 1178 dot 239 dot 1. Gloria?
You ready for the reading, Mr. Mayor?
Is there any discussion on it? This was the one that we had a couple no votes on last time, last city council meeting. That's why it's on this instead of the consent agenda.
I'm glad to see the R4 zoning on.
Okay. Any further discussion on it?
Are we just voting on the same thing we voted on last time, Mayor?
Yes.
Unless somebody has some questions that you wanna ask of staff. Same thing that was presented last city council meeting. Okay, seeing then, I'll call for an ordinance number.
Ordinance number 1178 point 239 point 1. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance number 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to mobile home residential on approximately 58.77 acres of property generally located east of Thornton Road and north of O'Neal Drive, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178 point 239 point 1 as presented. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
No.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
No. All right, so it passes, and so we'll move then to reports. We'll start over here to my right. Bob, you wanna go first?
Mayor, thank you, but no report tonight.
Okay, that's easy. Mr. Powell, you report you're live and you're here.
I was gonna say, I report that it's fun to be up on two feet and running around, so I am.
We're glad you're here.
I, I actually, Lisa used the magic, and I didn't get it. That was the O negative, it's supposed to keep you from getting it, which, which both of us have.
We were hoping, we were.
Well, I got it, and she didn't, so I'm glad that she didn't.
Yet, anyways, right?
That's, that's all.
Matt?
I do have a few things.
Go ahead.
The first, glad to see Mr. Powell back, too, and I.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Pointing in the right direction, so that's good. The youth commission got to meet virtually in hybrid, they have a hybrid meetings now, and they were excited. I found out that they are tired of COVID-19 and going to school online, but they're planning a scholarship, and they started talking about what should the subject be in. Basically, it came out, it's not gonna be about COVID-19 or how we feel about going to virtual school because they're tired of that. So there will be a big announcement, and I think it'll be pretty cool. And then, since it was a beautiful day and we were social distancing, they went and cleaned the Garden of Sunshine with rakes and shovels and cleaning stuff and rags, and so that was very cool, and it was a great day to be outside. And then, Mike Edwards from Community Services Department helped us out there, and he is gonna help position the new artwork and put it on the concrete pillars like we have out there. And Jeff from Community Services got everything arranged for us, so we appreciate them. And the Rotary Club, which has been doing a lot of work, you know, doing feeding, food distributions every month, is having their annual scholarship raffle fundraiser and auction, and I happen to be selling tickets for it if anyone's interested. They are $25 each, five for a hundred, and our new Chevy Dodge Ford Ram, I think I got them all dealership, Jerry Seiner Automotive Group was our banner sponsor, donated $5,000. That's a grand prize for the raffle, 5,000 cash.
Wow.
So they're getting in the community, too. And I did have some interaction with the police department over the last couple weeks, and I not, got pulled over, just happened to see them, and I, I agree with Lisa's assessment. I was like, wow, these kids are in high school still. But I wanna say they, both of the officers I had dealings with, again, wasn't, I wasn't pulled over or anything like that, but they were both professional. They didn't know who I was, I don't think, so, 'cause I don't want anything like that. But they were, they handled everything great, so I'm glad to see that we have such good officers and young officers that are taking care of our city. So it was great. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Matt. Lisa?
The only thing I wanted to comment on was, is, and I know that the fire chief is here and I'm the police chief, but, you know, it's so nice when you see, you know, we joke about how young these firefighters and police officers are, but, you know, what I noticed and I think is important is how diverse these classes are, and having women and, you know, minority, you know, I mean, it's just, it's just good to see that it reflects our community. And I know, you know, Chief, that you've really made a point to, to make sure that that happened, and I just wanna thank you for that. And as far as COVID, I'm so glad you're okay, Dick. Yes, I was hoping that you and I would get through it.
I absorbed your, your immunity.
So, yeah. We kept joking about, you know, all the studies that were saying people with O negative blood types. But, but I do wanna remind people, and I'm sure the mayor will go over the numbers, that, you know, COVID is still out there, and there's still people getting sick. I know numbers are down and hospitalizations, but, you know, I had a friend that was on a ventilator for three, three weeks and is now in rehab, and, and until you see how it affects someone, that, you know, it's still out there and people are getting really sick. So let's just try not to let our guard down, you know, people still do their part, and hopefully we can get through. I have a wedding that I postpone till September, so I'm hoping we can go through with it in September. So, anyway, so please don't let your guard down. Let's just try to do this together as a community and get through it. Stay healthy.
Thank you, Lisa. Donna?
Just a couple things. The CGKers, the last round ended last week, and I know Stephen and Lisa and Harlan, a few of us have been reviewing those. So I'm, I'm encouraged by some of the businesses that we didn't see the last round, so that was good. I also, a couple kudos. The Chamber of Commerce did, they've been doing a lot of things even though everything is closed down, and, and I was able to attend the before hours get together virtually, and I, I know everybody, me included, is so sick of Zoom and all that stuff. But hats off to Renee because she's really done a great job trying to keep people engaged, so that was nice. And also, congratulations to the new elementary school board president, Gilbert Mendez. A lot of us know him. He was one of the youngest candidates for city council a number of years ago, and I'm just really pleased that he stayed involved and is on the school board, and now he's in a, a very important transition leadership position with the passing of Davis Snyder. So I'm just really proud of him, so congratulations to him. That's all.
Absolutely. Thank you, Donna. Jeff?
Well, February is Black History Month, and our community has had a lot of influential African-Americans, but I wanted to highlight a couple families. The Robins family, Orlando, who attended a segregated school here in Casa Grande, it's Orlando Roberts now, was our first African-American county school superintendent. She's currently superintendent of Santa Cruz, and her son, John, was just named the head football coach at Vista Grande. So that next generation, her brother Randy, first NFL player to come up through our school system, played in three Super Bowls. He came back to our community, coached our football team, is now the athletic director. And then the Eddings family, Bill Eddings was our first African-American city councilman, and three of his children have served in education and leadership roles in education. So lots to highlight there. I saw what they did, and Eloy, Mayor Powell did a great job highlighting African-American contributions to his community and felt like we needed to do the same here.
Thank you, Jeff. Just a couple things on my list. I wanted to just make sure everybody was aware that the, the two water bills that were in the legislature that will help our Pinal AMA passed and are, have been signed by the governor, so they are officially approved. So that's good news. And those bills are completed and out of the legislature, so, and again.
Which, which ones are those?
The ones on designations, the ones that, that the Pinal partnership, not the Paul Partnership, but the Pinal, yeah, Pinal AMA and the stakeholders that put together Mr. Miller's program.
Right, okay.
I think you were involved in those, Mr. Powell. Just to give you an update on COVID numbers, they are coming down, so this, this is kind of the false Monday because Mondays are Sunday reports, so I, I try not to look at them too close, but we, in 85122, we had one reported infection for Sunday.
Wow, that's.
That's the lowest we've ever had. So I'm expecting a little bit of a spike tomorrow because of some lagging reports. But be that as it may, the overall numbers and the seven-day weekly trends are down.
Yeah, that's.
And they're, and they're negative, so that's good. I haven't seen this decrease like this since probably July this last year. So this, that's, I'm cautiously optimistic. But to Lisa's point, please don't, don't give up your guard. Continue to wear your face masks, even if you've had your two shots. We are at about 12% infection, meaning 12% of our population in 85122 has had the virus. So now the question is not, have you, do you know anybody who's had the virus? Do you know anybody who hasn't had the virus? That's, that's the reverse question. And I think that we're, we're seeing a good trend. I think we're probably at about 10% of vaccine in, in our community. So put that around 20, 25% of us have some level of immunity. So I think that's also cause for optimism, and hopefully these numbers will continue to drop down. The elementary schools are going back on March 1st. The high school, I talked to Dr. Beebe tonight, and he told me that they are still waiting for the county level benchmarks to get to yellow for two weeks in a row. I did tell him that on the numbers today, this through today, that, that 85122 is below 100 infections per 100,000. We haven't been there since July. So that's a, that's a good indication. Problem is, it lags by about a week and a half in terms of it getting onto the benchmark that the high school looks at. So we could be a couple, three weeks away from the high school opening up. He told me it probably would be after their spring break, which is the week of the 15th of March. So maybe the 22nd, maybe, somewhere around there. Anyway, enough on that. Just also wanted to give everybody an update on some work that, that our planning department and Mr. Tice has done. I think they rolled out last Friday, some automation in their department in terms of, of signing up for inspection. some automation in their department in terms of signing up for inspections, so that's all now automated, you can use your smartphone, you can go in and order an inspection on a house, all of our builders now are using the automated system to file their paperwork and all of their plans, and we automatically send it back to them, so they don't need to come in, so that whole automation system that we talked about, what, probably two years ago, is now maybe a year and a half, two years, it's been a while, anyway, it's finally coming to fruition, and I'm excited and really appreciative of the planning department and all the work they've done on that, so thank you, Paul, please tell your people thank you, too. State of the city is Wednesday, March 10th at 1:00 PM, so it will be virtual, but if you want to mark your calendars for that, we'll be dialing up an exciting virtual presentation of the city of Casa Grande.
Thank you.
We don't make it to go and bring a note for my mother.
Yeah, I'll know if you're not on there, Mr. Powell. Some updates on Lucid, they are moving forward, I think everybody's pretty much heard it, if you didn't see the CNBC broadcast of the video, it's pretty exciting, it shows a virtual build out of the facility by 2028, that's, by 2028, that's what that whole complex will look like, it's 5 million square feet, right now it's 900,000 square feet, so imagine five times bigger than what it is sitting there now, and by the end of this year, their forecast is to hire 1,600 or have 1,600 personnel employed, now that's between Tempe and here, by the 2028, it's 6,000 employees, so that's a little bigger number than we originally had anticipated, and where those, all those employees are located, still maybe up for interpretation in terms of, I believe most of them will be here, but I think they'll be between California here and Tempe, Tempe is going to be a receiving location, a receiving warehouse for a lot of product and pieces, and then it's all shipped down here, so that's just an update on Lucid, continue to work with them, I know they're going to start their second phase and third phase here, probably in the next quarter, and that's another 3 million square feet of added facility, so pretty exciting times, a lot of great stuff happening, and I think that we'll get through this pretty strongly after the pandemic is over. That's all I have, does anybody else have anything else you want to add? Yeah, Matt?
I forgot one positive thing, too, and I got texts from across the country about narco wars on National Geographic, and our SWAT team and our Lenco Bearcat was featured prominently on there from Penal County and the city of Casa Grande, and a lot of my friends like, hey, we saw you guys on TV, and they were doing, it was pretty cool, so, yeah.
Great, thank you, anybody else? All right, we all take a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, we'll move into executive session, let's take a five-minute bio break.